Welcome, I'm Jim Steele, this is a Town Hall. It is for Earth. Earth is the East Area Region 3 Town Hall. And it's a formerly recognized by the Board, uh, Town Hall. In other words, you got a club you didn't know you had. What we had before was Town Halls where we all shared information and everyone came back the next time and they heard the same thing and nothing happened. Because they just had information. Trying to do it different. Trying to do something that's being done down in Middletown, but they've kind of broken some ground for us. And we see that they've left a couple of things out of the way they do it, we're gonna try to do it a little better than here. So, let me explain what the Town Hall is about, but before we do that, I want to tell you what the agenda is gonna be. This is what's been noticed and around, maybe you folks have seen this. Basically, what we're gonna be talking about is that Town Hall. And then, a Senior Center update, something we're gonna try a little differently with regard to the Senior Center. No promises, but I did want to tell you about it. Uh, also want to talk about the Cemetery District, which includes this area here, and uh, what's been going on over there. Uh, we're in a little bit of an emergency there as well. Uh, we're gonna talk about the Keys out here, uh, because it's part of this formal Town Hall. So, in other words, these segmented areas are all part of it and represented inside the Town Hall. So that they can be taken care of under a government structure of formal meetings and then advice back to the county, where we can also do some applications for grants and that sort of thing. I want to talk about road paving, because a lot of people are interested in that, and a way to do it that's a little different. Uh, we'll talk about the Highway 20, uh, discussions about the, uh, project out here, what's been happening with the safety. And I wanted, uh, also announce about a roundabout that's gonna be on 53. The marijuana regulations, and emergency preparedness. So, all about, uh, half an hour, right? A little cover. There's a lot to talk about this county. And, uh, we want to do it in a formalized way so that we can get, uh, some things changed for us. Uh, we, it just won't happen unless we kind of get together and all agree on how to prioritize and then ask for stuff. And the Town Hall system, has an old system where folks got together and it was kind of a democracy, right? Everybody voted. But we don't have a democracy here. Uh, sorry to say to everyone who doesn't realize that, we have a republic. It's a representative government. So, for seven, um, little, uh, townships along Highway 20, seven communities, you get one person, and that's me. And something not right about that. When I took this job, I took it from the standpoint of everybody saying, "Yeah, Jim, go do what you've been telling us you're gonna, you're gonna try to do. Take care of this water issue, do something with the lake, and get it turned around." And I've been working on that, and what I've been finding out is there's a lot of other issues that we should also handle at the same time. And you shouldn't have to keep getting a new person in and training them up. Uh, there's no exchange of information between new, uh, supervisors. None whatsoever, there's just a kind of stack of stuff that's left on the desk, and then you're kind of on your own after that. So, I want to find a way, and this is the way that I've decided to work pretty well for us, to have kind of a crossover. The memory should be kept by the citizens. Let's say I'm the new supervisor stepping in, and you have all the corporate memory then, instead of the supervisor. And you can make sure that, what about the Keys waterfall? What about a road paving vacuum there? What are we gonna do for fire preparations? What are we gonna do for all of the trash that shows up in the hills? All of those things can then be corporate memory, you're on top of what's been happening up to that point. So, that's, uh, the permanent Town Hall structure. I've already, uh, gone through the process of getting it okay by the Board. We had a hearing and I brought it forward to them, I kept announcing it, kept announcing it, and I couldn't get any traction with it, with folks. So, I thought, "Okay, I'm just gonna do it on my own and see if I could just be a target, maybe somebody will realize this is a way to approach problems." So, I carved down a district. The district starts in Paradise Cove, and it goes all the way to the county line. And it goes up into the Highlands and it picks up Spring Valley. So, that district is the East Area Region 3 Town Hall. If this works, and we can kind of figure out how to make it work, then I'm gonna go to the west end and carve out a Town Hall over there, with the communities, and then one in the middle. So, East Area Region Town Hall spells Earth. Over on the west end, it'll be the West Area Region 3 Town Hall, it'll be Worth.
We need to pick our own name?
Yeah, and you can change it if you don't like it. And then the one in the middle, then the one in the middle will be the Middle Area, and that's gonna be Merth. And I know, they're not gonna wanna do that either, so there we are. So, it'd be Earth, Merth, Merth, so... Uh, but I, no one would give me any suggestions for names, so I came up with my own. I'm sorry, that was the best idea. It was a, it was a weak moment. Alright, so here's how it would work, if everyone would, you know, cooperate and, and want to do it this way. Uh, the way I have it set up, is that the entire, uh, Keys, uh, DOA, Property Home Association, sorry, Atlanta, the Property Owners Association would be represented on the Board with one member. In other words, they represent the 800 homes that are out there. Now, I've got a huge representation of one member. And then, the Spring Valley would be another member, they represent, they would elect their own. And I have 900 people, I don't know how many homes are there, but it's about 900 people. And they would be represented. And the Business Association would send a rep, they've already done that, and I've got an application for them. And so, they would be represented as the economic, uh, center ground for the communities. And then, I would have two people at large. Uh, the reason that I don't have five people at large, is because one area can try to put all five of their people in and only represent that one area. And I wanted it spread out, so that's, that was the one fix I wanted to have in place. So, Spring Valley certainly gets somebody, uh, the Keys certainly gets someone, and the business interests certainly get someone, and then two apart. So far, I've got one person, because I've had trouble trying to get everybody together. So, I thought, "Okay, I'm gonna have the first meeting of Earth, just do it myself." So, that's what this is. Some of the things you could do, for instance, if you were at the Keys, they would come forward and would say, "We have water quality problem in our Keys, we have 800 homes, and, uh, we can't get it fixed, and we've been trying to do that for decades. We can't get approval for machines in order to go out there and clean up the, uh, the bottom growing emergent vegetation, uh, even though it's a benefit to everybody because that hides mosquitoes, we want to clean that up and keep our waterways clean. We can't do anything about the, uh, cyanobacteria that comes in and dies and stinks, we can't do anything about water quality." Well, actually, they can. Uh, and science is pretty well-known, some of the things that can be done over there, uh, but if they've never taken a measurement of the water quality and have no data, and there's no way to fix anything without data. That's the first thing that should have been happened all these years. So, in order to take the first step, yes, there are grants available, yes, you're, uh, available, get those grants, and guess why? You're a member of Earth. Earth is a member of the County Board Supervisors, because it's recognized, and the county can certify the grant to go to the state, so we can take care of something over here that needs to be taken care of, if we can find that part. That's the way I'm trying to wrap this around, so we can start finding some answers. Uh, when I looked at the Keys, I mean, I was saying earlier on, once we get a certified lake scientist as a Director of Water Resources, uh, in, why, then they'll be able to come down here and say, "Well, here's some of the stuff we need to do over here." And then, all of a sudden, we have the county and the citizens doing a cooperative approach. So, when you go for the grant, the county goes for the same grant for the county properties, and you have the double planning, the money's coming in to take care of two things at once. Now, I want to tell you that the first part of that plan, or the second, two parts of the plan are taken care of. The first part is, we have Earth approved by the Board. The second part is, uh, I've gotten the Water Resources Director approved as having a science background for lake management. And right now, I've advertised across the country, um, in the North American Lake Managers, uh, group and society, in their job posting, and also in California Lake Manager Society group job posting. So, that's as far as we've gotten with that. We haven't, I don't know if we've got any response in back, if we go to somebody else. But I'm continuing to advertise for that position, but it's a Board-approved position. So, it's gonna split that department out, try to get someone in to host the lake, and that's gonna benefit the Keys. It's gonna benefit Earth, because then we can ask for those resources to help us out. So, by collaborating and pulling together all this stuff, we're thinking that maybe we can move forward. Uh, how would it benefit Spring Valley? Spring Valley does a lot of things on their own, they'll actually help everybody else, because they're very good at getting things done on their own. But there's some things they haven't been able to get done, such as they have landslide issues on the road going in, uh, they're having trouble getting the secondary access, entry points or access egress, uh, out there in case of fire or flood, that sort of thing. Uh, and we can actually then vote in as a group to help them out, and put together the grants, and it would be approved by the Board Supervisors as being awarded grant, and next thing you know, you get power of the whole county going forward saying, "Yes, we need this." So, again, we can work over there. As far as the Business Association over here is concerned, there's a lot of things we could do business-wise. Just one, for instance, would be the Clark's Island improvement that never got done. Uh, Clark's Island could easily become part of the boating community that comes to the lake, and they don't have anywhere to go, nowhere to tie up your boat, except maybe over, you know, one of the places that has a restaurant. Why not some extra dock tie-ups around Clark's Island, so that they can come underneath the bridge, tie up there, walk across the bridge, picnic right on that island, come across to the businesses on this side, and, uh, drop their money here as well as anywhere else. And then, maybe some of these businesses can have an easier time. But certainly, bringing them over and having a picnic on Clark's Island on boat is a good way to bring money into the county. And that discussion could be here in front of everybody, and maybe it's not something you want, or maybe it is, but you would have that public discussion. And so, Earth is the deal, uh, that I've brought forward, and I only have one application in so far. Is there anyone here from Spring Valley? One. You, sir, are representing the entire Spring Valley. So, here's what you're charged with doing. And I'm sure glad that you came, by the way. Now, Betsy, step back. So, if you would take applications back to your meeting and ask them, it would be alright if I didn't talk to them again about this, because it is official, and we do need someone from their organization, uh, because we want them to be a part of your whole district and, and talk to you as well. If you would do that for me, I appreciate it. I advertised, I couldn't get them with one person. That's part of the problem here. We need people to show up. If you want to run the show, you gotta show up. And that's just the one. Uh, so, is there anyone here from, uh, from the Keys? And guess what charge you have? You have to go back and say, "What, you guys..." Are you at the Property Home Association? You are? Okay, you really have to step up, elect someone, uh, put them on board, and it has to be by my agreement. There's one thing I've found, is that if I, if you bring someone forward, they can't work with them again, and he does. So, make sure with someone that compatible with. Uh, that's kind of one, one thing that's, uh, gonna be a hammer for you. Someone's gotta like me, right? No. They really must have to be able to talk with me. I, there's a couple of people that I know that I don't want, not necessarily there, but some in the district. There's a couple of people in the district I really don't want to have to work, because I know it's gonna be a hardship. Uh, we really want someone that's forward-thinking, trying to get something done for their community, and has a community interest at heart, and the voice of the people, not just their own voice. A couple of people I'm thinking have only talked for themselves and tried to manipulate everything, kind of, uh, manipulators on the doors, so we can get this thing done. So, if you could do that, I'd really appreciate it. Uh, the Business Association, like I said, is covered, and I need, uh, people at large, so I will take two applications at large, and I'll, I'll interview you and we'll talk. And, uh, if it really sounds like what you want to do, then we'll put it in front of the Board. So, what happens is, all the applications will go in front of the Board. I said I got 10 of them, I only need five. The Board will defer to me, and they'll say, uh, "Would you present your applications?" And I'll tell them, "These are the five applications, I'll have all 10 in front of them. These are the five people I recommend." And then, we'll vote on each one, and those are the five that will get in. And then, we'll be official as Earth Representatives and your community representatives. Then, we'll have a Town Hall like this, and guess who's gonna run the Town Hall? Your committee. It won't be me. I will be there in witness of the whole thing, and you can be advising me, and I'll be part of the conversations I get and questions, but you're in charge then. That's the way they do it, and math works very well. Uh, the other thing I need to, oh yeah. And then, the other way, in order to really get the representation, and this goes very well for Spring Valley. The place where the meeting hall happens will rotate. So, Spring Valley would, because they have a representative, will be in charge of hosting. They'll put the agenda together in concert with the other Board members, they'll go to the contact list, and by the way, if you signed up, you've signed up tonight, uh, for the beginnings of that contact list, so you'll be the, uh, Board will have the charge of that contact list. They'll get it out to everybody, and then they'll be in charge of trying to get to your audience. And it'll rotate over to the Keys, it'll rotate to the Business Association, and Business Association will probably have it here, uh, and anybody could have it here. But ordinarily, you would have it in your own location, because each of you have a Town Hall area. There's three large, four large buildings in the district, uh, the other one being the moose, so that would be another question. So, is there any questions about that?
So, what's the timeline for getting, getting people to the, by Board?
Uh, it, well, it's, I've had trouble so far, so I'm gonna tell you, the timeline is what I can get on. As soon as I get enough people, and I interview them, and we're all good to go, and I got five, then, as fast as we can do it. So, if you get back to, whenever it is, you just let me know when you're gonna have your next meeting, and can get somebody to me, and that'll be the timeline. This is all about, not all about speed, this is all about representation and making this thing work. Uh, and the Board loves it. I, you know, I was talking to a couple of local scientists, "Man, if I could get this going in my district..." Well, guess what? They're doing it up in Palm now, and math is going through a little renaissance right now, because, uh, the local supervisor did not take the advice of the people that were at math, because he is a representative of his own mind. All you're doing is advising. That's all you're doing. But on the other hand, if you do it right, and you get the right, uh, crowd there, and you get some good ideas on the table, and it's doable, and the plan comes up, why wouldn't you do it? The problem was, they were voting on an idea that the Board could not do. And then, they blamed the supervisor. So, it has to be this two-way street. Now, we can't do that here at the Research Center. This, this had to do, just in case you wanted, had to do with the Dollar General decision in Middletown. We've got two up here, so I'm wondering what's the big deal there, but they didn't want to have one. You cannot vote on keeping somebody out. Can't do it, it'd be a lawsuit so fast. So, all we had was a major use permit in front of us, and yeah, they met all the criteria for major use. So, we voted for it, and you'd have thought we'd have touched off a topic called the ages out of the circle. So, it wasn't everybody, I saw a lot of people down there that loved the idea of the shopping opportunity, disliked the shopping opportunity you have here. So, it's not everybody, and it's not all the time. So, that's why the supervisor has to go a different way once in a while. But you ought to have that, that understanding before the vote is taken, and I think that's where he made a mistake. Uh, Jim and I talked about it quite a bit. So, I want to have those understandings and make sure that we're doing the right thing. So, I think we can solve some problems, and that would be Earth. You have your charge, you've got yours, and if I can get two people out of this group, or any group, or anybody you know that wants to be people out of your members-at-large, then I have applications with them. And all you have to do is put down your name, your address, I'll fill in the rest, I'll get it. All you have to do is take the application, fill it in, and get it back to the Board, uh, to get me from that one, yeah.
I think that you may have had problems in getting representation before, because I learned from the Business Association, and go onto the county website, and onto that application, and download it, and, uh, get our presentation, and I keep looking here and didn't realize that. So, that's why it was so slow to me.
Yeah, it was tough.
If you go on here tonight, then it's okay, you'll have the problem.
If there's anyone who hasn't yet on, that just happened to have one with me, and I'll give them a pen with my name on it, that's absolutely guaranteed. I, I don't see any hands now, so I want you to think about it, and I'm gonna start to twist some arms here, but I really need this to happen. And here's the, and I'll leave that, if, no more questions are, are you good on it? Anybody? Alright, I'm gonna leave that, and I go to the next deal. Let me tell you about the Senior Center update, or an update on what we're trying to do for Senior Centers in the county. Your own Senior Center runs their own show, and it's the same for each of the Senior Centers in, in the county. Uh, basically, we have five different places that you could call Senior Center Board that are actual centers, and then another one is trying to be, and then we have, like, in addition to that, a Senior Support Center. Is that right, Betsy? Is that what's called?
That's correct.
Senior Support Center. All of them are counted into this. Uh, we want to try to get everybody on board. So, what we want to do is pull together what we're calling the Senior Center Summit. It'll be once a year, hopefully we'll get the first annual off the ground, and then hopefully they'll like what is happening, and they'll do it every year. Uh, this is where there'll be a shared community of seniors, for seniors, talking about what they need, and then how to approve their different centers. That's one of the agendas. The second thing is, because it's some organization that's operating from the county level, uh, they can put together something like a, an endowment fund, so that any senior that wants to lead an endowment for the benefit of other seniors will have a place for that legacy. We don't have that in the county, so we want to get that established. The third thing that would happen is, that we would set up a training center, uh, that would happen at, at that particular summit, which is really a conference, right? Would happen at that conference for the Board members. So that the Board members of all the Senior Centers would be trained by professionals as to the things that they can do, how to do it, where to do it, and how to be effective. And what other seniors around the country do. And so, we would have a Board Training Person. And they would be set off, go to their training, anybody who wants to go to that training could do it, because there might be people that wants to become a Board Member. And they say, "Huh, I know how to do that, I can do that," and they'll step forward. So, having good Board Members is very, very important. And sometimes, the whole Board has changed over, and nobody knows how to do anything, and so they, they go in circles for a long period of time. This way, during the year, if you get them all trained up at one time, and during the year they start to switch out, there's always someone there that has been at that training by the next year, that's the thing. If you lose them all from one training to the next, then there's other problems at that center. But, uh, trying to get some kind of anchor in place, so that we're more effective because we know what to do. I had a whole list, I didn't pre-visit it properly. Alright, so we've already come up with a whole bunch of ideas. Oh, one of them is to establish a criteria for the allocations of funds that might go into a central endowment center, or a central grant center. If you were to get endowments to go into a fund, and you have the fund established, you can also beef that fund up by, with a centralized group, saying, "We represent all of the seniors in Lake County, and go for grants, and go for donations." And there are donating, uh, angels out there that actually, uh, give grants, or actually give a donor, they call it, uh, funds, donations, for groups that are worthy, that are organized, and they're actually doing something for their seniors. Well, if we all come together to make that argument, there are places out there where we can put that argument, and maybe we'd get funds back in. So, if we do that, then we can start a competition in a way, so that each Senior Center, uh, tries to put programs on the table that would enhance the, uh, participation by the seniors. You know, better food, higher class, everything. Games, a whole night yards trips. In fact, uh, one of the concepts was, uh, Senior, uh, Gaming Day at the local gaming establishment sponsored by that, uh, gaming establishment, you know, free, free chips to play, bus ride over, where all the seniors come together, they all have fun at one of the gaming places. So, I, I talked to, uh, one of my Chairman of Tribe friends, and they said, "It's not a bad idea," because they love the give-back idea to seniors. Uh, so, they're a very community-minded group. So, it's possible to do that. It's also possible to have guided birdwatching tours, uh, for people who like to birdwatch, especially on the boats, so we went out into the slough areas, we have new hiking trails we're trying to put together, uh, bass fishing, some of the guided bass fishing opportunities might come up. So, if we put that together, not only can we do it for seniors that want more activity in their lives, but we could actually advertise the Senior Centers outside the county, and try to buzz them over and show them a good time. Not a bad way to be. We are a very hospitable county, so we want to show that. Well, I think we got that. Fundraising, oh, uh, event planning tool, donation sites, targeted fundraisers. That, what this is, is how to do fundraising, so that we share ideas among centers. Each center has a different opportunity to do fundraising than the others might, and then sharing those opportunities helps each one take care of their own individual localized fundraising. So, if we all share during a summit, then that'll help that. Disaster preparation, I found that there's, if you can coordinate a group, so that special needs for seniors, uh, that's, this is all the time in prior area, uh, if we do that at the different centers, and coordinate the special needs of our seniors during the disaster, we won't leave behind, and we're really concerned about that. Uh, and in fact, I was gonna have a speaker here tonight, and it, because of our local disaster, he couldn't make it. So, I'm sorry about that.
Who was that gonna be?
Uh, it was gonna be Dale.
Cardnappin?
Cardnappin, Jim. Yeah, he had a little less to stop, he was gonna break. Coordinate the California Legal Services, we have Agent and Disabilities Remote Resource Center, the Senior Coalition Action Network, the Health Insurance Counseling Program, a whole list of things, where we can kind of coordinate, name that during special days, where seniors could show up and go and kind of take care of these. Uh, so, these are just some of the ideas coming up. The, oh, the final one was, uh, develop a collective. The collective would be that the seniors would all, or the centers would all go together to buy the fresh farm produce at certain times of the year, and get distributed out. So, then it would show up after the Senior Centers, and you guys would come and get all your fresh produce at one time, and it would be free, so... And I, and I've got other ideas here, but that was just one meeting. We're gonna have several, and we're gonna try to have that summit during March. If it doesn't happen, well, I'll have red egg on my face, but, uh, I wanted to announce it to see if I can generate some enthusiasm for it. So, do I have any questions about that? Is it a good idea?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I represent the Board Directors of Southern Alpine Senior Center.
You're welcome to speak up.
Doing business as, uh, you know, short industry. Okay, I, I represent the Southern Alpine Board Directors of Southern Alpine Senior Center, Inc., uh, and I'm doing business as a short industry center, and, uh, anything I can do to facilitate.
That's a good idea from there, Jim.
I think it's a great, we think it's a great idea. We are, uh, sort of the poor orphans of the Senior Centers in the county, because we're outside the, to healthcare districts that provide, provide funds, uh, grants, that you don't get, so fundraising is a really, it's a real precaution.
Okay, that's fine, and that's exactly what this would be all about. We, and the way that it's, we're pulling this together, the, uh, the Directors, what do you call it?
Executive Directors.
Executive Directors of each one of the seniors is actually doing the work. Uh, they're coming together, we're trying to keep it just those folks, so that we don't get a misrepresentation from any of the centers. If those folks come together, isn't a good idea, how do we do it? They're the people that are actually paid to do this stuff. And what we'll do is, we'll, we'll go into the, uh, the other agencies, we'll bring them in, tap their expertise, and then by March, hopefully, we'll be able to, uh, announce this thing, or before March we'll announce it, but by March we'll have it, and you're all invited to a party. It'll be fun. And we'll see if we can actually crank it up for seniors in Lake County, because you know, you got a workforce. I mean, we can call ourselves the Gray Forest, right? I can say this, I'm a senior.
I have a question, Jim.
Uh?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What about the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council?
Yeah.
Where is it?
Oh, uh, well, where is it? They're not here tonight, is that what you mean? Where are they gonna be in this thing?
Yeah, how?
Oh, they were there. They're at our meeting. The 3A?
They were at what meeting?
They're at our meeting, our formation meeting.
Uh-huh, and they're gonna support the Senior Summit thing that you're talking about?
Yeah, they're, they're at our meeting, and we're working with them on this.
Okay.
There's, there's nobody left out. Okay, the Cemetery District, let me tell you what that's about. We, uh, right here where we're sitting are part of the Cemetery, Lower Lake Cemetery, We, right here where we're sitting, are part of the Cemetery, Lower Lake Cemetery, and then the Lower Lake area is part of it, and of course, Thurlake, oh, I'm sorry, City of Thurlake, is part of the Lower Lake Cemetery District. It's funded by a little bit of tax that comes off of property, but it's not enough to support it because of the, remember the old Jarvis Gaunt?
Prop 13.
Prop 13, yeah. That said that you have to keep everything according to what the population evaluation is at that time, and it's not to go off unless it changes hands and all that stuff. Well, it's a pretty poor district across the border, and people stay in their houses a long time. And the district actually told me, they called, they've been trying to get supervisors involved, and for some time apparently. And they called me and said, "We're, we're going to have to dissolve." That's how dire the situation is. It's even more dire than them dissolving because they don't have enough money to carry their expenses. They don't have anybody on the board. They've got three people, they're barely a forum, and the person who has the people has to quit because of health reasons. So if you live in a district, it's certainly welcome to take an application, apply for the board so they can have a forum. We're trying very hard to change the way business management is aligned and change some of the rules. I've sent a call for help to our legislators if they can do anything, our congressmen at even the federal level because it's a VA. I'm also trying to get a rental out there. I wanted to get a cell tower, a rental in the back park. We're bringing some funds and I talked to Horizon. Missed it by that much. They said it would have been a perfect site, but we've already contracted to put one in in a different place. It was about two months difference. If we'd have been working on this last year, I think we would have had. So it's never too late. I put extra pressure on them. I said, "You know, contracts can be broken, I'm not sure that's going to work." But on the other hand, the, I've also talked to Native Americans about joining forces with the Cemetery District because they have needs as well. And they have sites that are their historical sites that are within the district. They're not on the site of the district, but the district covers them. And I said, "Well, why not have the district cover your sites as well?" And then we have joint power to go in and ask for congressional funds to support the VAs and the Native Americans. So they're thinking about that. So there's a lot of ideas, but I'll tell you, this district needs someone to step up and be on that board. Otherwise, there's nothing I can do. They can't even have a forum, they can't even have a meeting. And that's where we are right now, that's how that operates. So I have an application with me. So if anybody wants to talk to me after this or has questions, come up to me and let's just have a conversation. It's one time a month. If there's any more time than that, all the work comes to you. You say yes, I agree with that, or no, and then you're official part of the solution rather than a person sitting here wishing they could have an application. Which I happen to have right with me. No pressure. Okay, so no more questions on that one? Now that they got where they are? Alright. Let me talk about this. I talked about Keys Waterfally. Let me jump to the road paving. Road paving is a real problem that's going to be for some time in this state. Simply because gasoline, the way the laws are, you know this state is not going to change their laws very quickly. But the way the laws are, the tax on gasoline is a set amount, not a percentage. So it's so many pennies per gallon. And if people use less gallons, you have less pennies going into the bank, and that's what's happened. They're using less because the cars are getting more efficient, people are now going to go electric. So there's going to be less and less money, and so the support for the roads is going to be less for these off-the-highway areas. The county gets a share of that. The biggest portion of the amount goes to the main highway. You saw the very nice highway that was put in here, that was $30 million worth of highway. And so that's where the money goes. And then they, and they see that as the need. Why do they see that as the need rather than, you know, right out there after your driveway all the backing? Because that's where the commerce is. Power flows through that. So they're not going to let that kind of go to heck. They're, and they're going to say, "Sorry, guys, you're going to take care of this on your own. We'll give you the money proportionally that we can," and they do. "But you're not going to get any more than that, and you're going to have to put up the gypsy oil, whatever the county can do." And there's a couple of people told me, the county hadn't been to their road in 40 years. And so I go out there, every time they, they call, I'll go and I'll drive it. And then I'll call in, I'll say, "Man, this thing's terrible, what can we do?" And we can get to a meeting someday and again, I don't know. We just don't have the money because the startup costs are so huge on any given road. It takes their whole budget for a given road. So what they do is they go to where the most traffic is, that serves the most people, and then they get the grace for the squeaky wheel. And then everybody else that's on the side, well, doesn't get it. So here's a couple of success stories that this is often to us doing if we want to pull together as a unit. By the way, we can actually do this as a group, too. Over in Keys and over in the Ripier, they pull together as a unit called Benefit Zone, and the Benefit Zone they taxed themselves. And for Keys, the way it turned out, for repair and reconstruction, the total project cost was $900,000. The county contributed $355,000, and the area raised $545,000. It was spread over 836 parcels, and that turned out to be $127 a year per parcel for six years, and they get a payment. And it's a good deal, right?
No.
Oh, geez. That should be for some.
They haven't did it twice, they still didn't.
They didn't know what they're doing. I don't know how to, I don't know how to solve that one. But here's the other deal, Orchard Shores, their total project cost was $209,000. They brought in $95,000 from the state, that's all they had, and then the county road funds, $27,000, probably had a special fund for $95,000. The county road funds were $27,000, and then the local people brought in $86,000. Number of parcels, 164, and that was 123 per year per parcel for five years. I don't know how to solve the problem, not doing it right, but this is the way to solve it, forget the plan.
Well, they did, you call them taxes, they did a terrible job.
Right. That's supposed to be a contract, right?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll bring that up to you. One of the places is trying to get a road that goes up to all the parcels done for years, and it's, I'll tell you, it's embarrassing. And there was nothing I could do. And I went and counted all the parcels, it would have been exactly in the same ballpark if it had been done this years ago. If they were, and now they're saying, "Yeah, we're willing to put it on that." So I wanted to bring it up so that if there's any place that looks like if one of them come together to fix the road, we can look at it as a benefit zone and pull that zone together and see what the costs are. And if it looks like everybody would participate, it can be done. Everybody would have to participate, though. You can't leave somebody out that doesn't, gets the benefit but doesn't pay. That's the.
We, they are, you know, they should be adding it all back.
Yeah, well.
More taxes. Make up the taxes.
Alright, we're going to have to, that doesn't make any sense. We're going to have to talk about it.
I'm sure you send back your legislature one piece.
And it doesn't go by tax, the benefits of them go in. So it doesn't, it doesn't make, it doesn't sound right. Let's talk. I will go find out exactly what it is and bring it back to you, but that, I'm sure is not the right case. If they do a bad job, that's a different deal. And we've got to make sure they do a good job. Now, they're really happy over Ripier. So it isn't though they do a bad job everywhere they go, it was done well over there, this is one across the lake. So it can be done right. I'm sorry to hear it wasn't done right. That was the first time I heard about that. So let me see if I can get the answer on that. Yeah.
Just in that same issue, we get other people coming in and they'll tear up the roads, sewer work, other stuff like that, and you do a half-assed job in the area.
Ah.
What are we, half, okay, that's curious, we've already paid for it.
This is a really good point. If somebody comes in and tears up the road for sewer, they're supposed to put it back exactly right, and they have it been. And no one's held their feet to the fire. And if we have a way to organize a complaint when that happens, we can put pressure on it because they're under contract. They cannot do that. It's supposed to be at least to the same level, and in fact, the mix of material is to state standards, not the county. So it's state rules. So they've been violating in a lot of areas. I know about that, when I was on the waterboard, we found out that we weren't doing it right. So we had to pick it up to a higher level. So you're exactly right, and we need to have a way to function to bring all that forward and the earth again, but would have been a way to do it. So if a new supervisor comes in, and then you keep them up to speak, you keep them up, so that's where that would have worked. So anyway, that's the road business. I was going to have a person here tonight, Scott, to explain all this, and he would have heard that complaint in person.
That happened.
Darn, and he would have been able to feel that question, and I can't do it. So I'm going to go directly back to Scott and see what's going on, see if we can get an answer to it. Okay? Alright. Let's see, the, or Waterfally, oh, wait a minute, I have to do the Highway 20 discussion. Highway 20 corridor, I've been making a lot of complaints to them, and so they kind of are walking around me a little bit saying, "Hey, Jim, is this okay now?" So ha-ha, got their attention. I want traffic calming to slow people down, and we didn't get the traffic calming budget that we were supposed to get. So we were able to get them to paint more lines on the ground. The whole idea of the line painting on the surface was so that the people driving through that was out of town would get the impression that they were in town. It looked like a through fair. I mean, they would slow down, here's a 35, so people taking through your 55. So it was, all of the crosswalks, that's not necessarily for people to use a crosswalk. That's to give the impression they're in a regular town. And apparently it works, they did traffic radar studies, and they said, "Yeah, people are slowing down." So apparently that worked. And the other thing we did was narrow the lane. So ordinarily, you get a 12-foot wide traffic lane, so out here you get 11-foot wide lane with all of the extra paint. And then that gives them the impression that, again, you're downtown. It's not enough. There are areas where it didn't come out the way that I thought that it would, and so we're in discussion about that again. If we have that town hall and people are out driving around bringing those ideas back, we can actually have the Caltrans safety engineer here talking to you directly. And they would have to make the peace with you, because if they don't, then I would be complaining, and the elected official of a district complaining, apparently it carries some clout, I didn't realize that. They don't like that. Because you're representing over 640 square miles with one person complaining and going through seven communities, they don't like the fact that it's, someone's saying things about, that's not like to represent him. So I'm saying, "You got to pass through my people. These are the folks, you've come there and convinced them you're doing a good job." And we can do that with the earth, and so that's the other important aspect. Is so that they have to come and give witness to you guys. I just told them. Because they come to my office and we argue, but they don't hear your arguments. So they were telling me that there was no problem in the town of Lasserne on that east side, if you know the east, or, I'm sorry, the west side. If you know the west side of Lasserne where you come in, it's a straight shot and it says 35, and nobody slows down until they get to the bridge. Yeah, so they, they're doing 45 and 50, then when you get to the bridge, they think about slowing down. And so I asked for extra markings out there and everything, and they didn't get them. And I says, "Oh, we've gone out there and done traffic study, and these folks are doing just fine." In fact, since the average traffic speed is 45, the rules say we should raise the limit to 45 because there's no accidents. There's the circular logic statement. I said, "Okay, try this one on your hat. What you're doing is using a logic for traffic, and you're imposing that logic on the citizens who have to then adjust in order not to be able to use the road. They don't use the road, and that's why they don't come across right there, and that's why you don't have any accidents." So they've adjusted to those speeds by not using it. So what you've done is you've just shown disrespect for one of the communities in Lake County. You don't want me saying that in newspaper, do you? Because I will. In fact, the last time I said this in newspaper, I got a call from a director saying, "Wasn't you kind of tone it down a little bit?" So they really are sensitive to it, but that's the point. You guys are letting that traffic go through our community and showing disrespect. So let's do something about it. So that's on the table, we're having that discussion, and they are being very sensitive to our needs. I just can't come up with any way to slow this people down.
One of the best things I think with Caltrans or here on the highway is when they put, whatever you call those bumps, on the side and in the middle, probably, you know, that when you run over, they call those.
Dragости bumps.
Yeah. That's what I think, I've been in this county 39 years, back and forth on this highway all the time, and I think that's one of the greatest things, and on the edge and also on the middle where there's no passing.
Yeah, you know, the passing is a real problem, and we talked about it at length because you have this long-term lane, left and right, and people use it as a passing lane. And it's one of the reasons is, well, number one, it's the easy, it's a road, you don't have to do those dragosties. But the other reason is that when they look down and they see a line of sight that's clear, if we had ways to break that up so they wouldn't see that, then maybe they would do it. So I brought that point up with them, and the traffic engineer tried to argue with me. I said, "All right, I want to tell you what, you come and make those points in front of our town halls, that's where I want you, not in front of me." Because I think you're full of tomfoolery here. You don't really understand that these people are actually running at 15, 60 miles an hour down the centerpiece in order to get around slower traffic than anything. Everybody here knows that, right? Yeah? That guy told me it didn't happen.
The other thing they made it absurd, they got it twice now, is on one of the crosswalks they put up those standing signs, they're down again.
Okay, let me tell you about that. We got a story for every one of them. There's so many stories, I'm loving this job, I really do. This is just a hoot. So over in Lasserne, we had a crosswalk, that's right, a crosswalk, yeah, everybody's seen it? And it keeps getting knocked down. They told me it wouldn't work. It won't work if you keep looking there, because when somebody comes out to make the left turn, they're looking the other way for traffic and they cut the corner. Why don't you put it on the other side? And for some reason, they're not doing that. In any case, I want them at every single one of the crosswalks. Solve that, that breaks up that long line of sight, but they got to be able to put them in so it works, and they haven't done it yet. They're trying to prove a point to me and I'm trying to be stubborn, so that's the story. It's a fight going on, alright? So they are approving some, some changes. They're going to put some bulb outs. Does everybody know what a bulb out is? Anybody want to know? Nobody wants to know?
Yes.
Somebody wants to know? Okay. If you're going to go get across the crosswalk and it's 150 feet for safety, a bulb out, the traffic, it starts right there. A bulb out is the sidewalk goes out a little bit further in a bulb, so that first five feet is safety zone because it's curved out. And so the traffic then is passed there. Then you walk quickly across the 12 or 11 feet of traffic onto another safety zone, and then another 11 or 12 feet, another bulb out. And so you, you're not likely then to be where you can't get to cover real quick. Oh, we kind of got to stop, and then they step over, instead of trying to run the entire distance. That's a bulb out. And if you want to see how it works, you drive down Upper Lake.
What would the middle be?
They have little islands if it's a very.
Is it raised or just?
Yes, raised so that everyone can see it. But you have to be able to do it so that traffic turning can miss them. And so that's, they may not do that here, I don't know if it's possible, the engineers have to look at it. But if you want to know how it is done, you look in Upper Lake and they have bulb outs. So the traffic has to squeeze through. And then there's other.
But that's on a very slow road, that's on a.
That's a slow road, this is a highway, and so everybody has to slow down because of the bulb outs, and they say it worked.
Jim?
Yeah?
I have a question. About 10 years ago, there was a protest that went Iowa, county and Caltrans regarding traffic calming, this area.
Yeah.
We spent hours going, planning, doing the time. That was about 10 years ago. Whatever happened.
Now, you guys are asking all the right questions, these are softballs. They didn't do it, and where is it? They didn't do it and where is it? It's in my office and I said to the engineer, "How come we haven't done that? We all went to the planning meetings, we all figured this out." He says, "We don't know about it." They changed staffs there. So guess what I made available to them? I copied that thing, I don't know how many times, I said, "Now there's no excuses, no by the way, and I may not realize this, but I sent a copy to your director." So, yeah, they have it now and they're looking at it from the standpoint of the funding. They stopped the funding on it and that's what happened. And what was really interesting included that and no one thought to him, "There's no of that here." So yeah, see, the continuity loss is what I'm trying to correct. If there's a town hall group that meets all the time and you're the memory instead of these officials, you're more likely to get this stuff done. You just keep talking, you keep asking those questions and then it stays in their memory. So the new person comes on at Caltrans, guess what? The new supervisor, the new whoever makes that phone call, "Hey, what about that? I want you to come and talk at my town hall." And they say they'll do it. They actually want to hear from you and they have trouble getting the town hall together because they don't know how to pull one together. So you guys can be your own town hall, make it a permanent thing, say how many people you represent and you keep their feet to the fire and you wouldn't have that project. Guarantee it because they had the money. They just moved it off somewhere else because nobody's making noise. And now that I'm making noise, they're saying, "You guys should have been making noise all along." Here's the other thing I found out. We have a committee that represents the county to Caltrans. I'm not on the committee, so the whole district actually doesn't necessarily get represented because when they bring something up in front of that committee, they say yes, no, indifferent and they don't bring up anything that happens within this entire corridor. This is no wonder these guys are on the committee, that's the other supervisor, right, you've got two. And you can't have three, you can only have two. And they're on it every time. So I thought, "Ah, I'll be a committee of what?" That's why I went directly to Caltrans and that's why we're getting the hearings. And I said, "Look, there's no other district that has 100% of a high rate through. All of your Highway 20 goes through District 3, not through any other district. You should be talking to me and not those guys." So this is where the committee starts. And guess who the committee's gonna meet? It's gonna be the town hall. And so that's, I can bring this stuff forward or I can bring them here. I think it's a neat deal, I think we've got some power that we gotta use. So that's the Highway 20 discussion, any other questions on that one? Oh, I got one more, roundabout. Over here on Highway 53, they're gonna put in a roundabout. And yes, what?
Can we do something about funding somebody from Caltrans going to New England and learning how to build a roundabout? Maybe send it to Canada or maybe send it to Europe, but you know, build a roundabout that they could pull a 53-foot trailer through without stopping and then running over the roundabout.
That's why they rounded off the curbs. I'll tell you what, that was a good comment two years ago. It's done. The engineering is done, the plans are done, so I just wanted to let you know that they have the funding and they want to put it in down here at 53. They did sit, without talking to anyone else as far as I know, they sat in their own group and came up with all their own ideas, engineered it for themselves, then they approved their own thinking. So, that's all, but this is the way it's done.
Are they all from Lake County?
No.
Yeah.
Now, why would that help? I don't know. Yeah.
They're gonna leave the turnoff there before we get down to the intersection?
They're basically lying. Were they gonna leave the turnoff before we get down there, before you had to stop?
Leave the turnoff.
Oh, give it to the right?
Yeah, I think they're gonna leave that. From what I...
What are they gonna do?
Yeah, that'll help. Yeah, I think they're gonna leave that and I think they're gonna leave the road down the hill. So, yeah, the ones that would come 100 miles an hour down the hill, they get a straight shot still. The only ones that would turn are the ones that come from Clear Lake, goes around the roundabout and comes this way. And the ones that come down the hill and want to turn and go towards Clear Lake go use the roundabout. But if we're going there, I believe we have the sweep still. And I will check that to be sure, but I...
We better use the light in there.
No, the light wouldn't work. The roundabout is far safer than the light.
These guys talking, the guy that's coming in turn, he's got bright, these guys don't even feel right.
I guarantee you, the light is not safer and I guarantee you, I've seen the stats, what they have now is not safe at all. They have fatalities down there and it's different than you think. You think that folks coming down the hill is hit people that are coming out? It doesn't happen like that at all. They say it's people coming this way in a hurry and blow through the stop sign and then hit people that are trying to make the left turn. And that's been the biggest accident across there. So they say the roundabout is one that has knocked up right in the head and even though you don't like the signs, they have two of them and they have the stats to show. And so they want to put another one down here and it's gonna happen, so hopefully it'll all be, everybody's liking the, unless you're riding 53-foot trucks. They're going through the public notice phase right now, we have a plan. They're gonna have a, gonna have a meeting at the Moose. And a meeting at the Moose, shoot, the one thing I didn't bring was my, oh, it's on my desk. They're gonna have a meeting down here at the Moose and I think it's the 26th, I'm not sure. If you want to know, leave me a note, I will get it to you, put it on your contact list. But it's gonna be at the Moose, watch for an announcement. We'll try and get it out to everybody, in fact, that's where I'll go. I will send the announcement out to everybody that gave us a contact. That tells you you gotta have a contact list on it and I will get it out to you. Alright, so they'll be down at the Moose and I'll talk about it and you guys can complain. I won't do any good, I saw the plans. One thing to hear, you know how it is, it's government, they make darn sure we're all set and say, "Thank you for your input." Oh, we had, well, input.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask this, this is a separate question, are they going to put a roundabout in Lasserne, as I heard that they talked about it, like going up the...
No, yeah, no.
Oh, they're not, that's...
That's not...
You don't have to worry about it.
Don't have to worry about the Lasserne roundabout. This is the last roundabout, right? I have an assurance. You can take that with the bank.
Alright.
Okay, carry, cover the road, Highway 20, marijuana regulations. Get your comments in ASAP, you can make a difference. Right now, the folks that are comedy are the folks to grow. If you are a grower, good, you've got plenty of representation. I'm the only one representative because there's nobody stepping up from the community that says, "Keep it out of my neighbor's backyard because I don't like the stuff." So we're trying hard, but if we pull off this earth thing and if everybody here will let me know what their comments are, I will continue to do that representation. The earth would be a really strong voice right now, I mean, really strong. I can emphasize how strong it can be. And reasons are that the county is pulling together a tax initiative that will be on the vote, on the ballot for you to vote for. That tax initiative will be for those folks that are in a commercial scenario and they'll be out, away from the community growth boundaries. So they're gonna be out there, in fact, they will be away from you. That's what we agreed to. But there's gonna be some rules coming in on top of that that will allow for personal grows. So you can still have in your backyard. And so we have to adopt those rules that will keep it so that it's manageable, the neighbors are not, their property values and they personally are not impacted by it. But we have to hear from everybody or we don't have no horse property. There's only one side speaking.
Is this to be on the ballot this year?
Is this one?
Is this gonna be on the ballot this year?
Yes, it's gonna be on the ballot this year. We got it in the time, so you'll see it for this year. So it's yes or no. Now, the yes vote, will bring in the tax dollars, a buck a foot for growing, so it's the canopy foot. So it's a buck a foot for canopy growing, it comes down to about $100 a plant, that's what they pay. And then it's $2 for a combined indoor grow, outdoor grow and it's $3 a foot for an indoor grow. And that will try to push people from the indoor grow scenario because it costs, they can grow, the reason that they like to do that indoor grow is because they can get through crops a year, but it's more. So that's kind of the reason for that. Now, those tax dollars will come in and support law enforcement and code enforcement so that we can keep them from growing illegally in your backyard and out of the community growth boundaries. But we also need on the code enforcement side, good codes to enforce from the standpoint of those executive, that's why your inputs and so forth. If you don't want them in your backyard or near it, you know, speak up so that everybody knows of sensitivity, we'll try to find a way to make that work. So that's the marijuana deal. Is there any questions? I'm not the expert on marijuana, I'm the head.
Now, will they sell the product or are there gonna be any tax dollars, like we paid taxes, sales taxes?
Oh, yes, there is. Will there be any sales tax from the standpoint of selling it? And that I can't answer because that has to do with state law, not ours. We can only do it on the parcel side and state law has not been passed one way or the other. When that comes down, then we'll know which way that goes.
So how do you suggest we make our comments and communicate with the law?
ASAP and anytime, now and the thing passes, support it. Send them to me, we have an email address at the county, that was jim.steele@lakecountyca.gov. I'll give you a card if you need that. You send them to me and what I do is I put them in with the committee. There's two people on the committee, I am not on it. I don't know if I dodged a bullet or which end of that I want, but it's Rob Brown and Anthony Fern. And they need to hear from you and I'll just pass it on to them. And then I'll have something to say to them, too, because these things are all a group of people. If you don't see them until it comes up at the board meeting and then I say, "Wow, that's what you guys came up with and then we're voting on it." That's just about the way it works. So I've gotta make sure that they understand it before they make it. They get pretty married to it by the time they come up with an idea and it's hard to give off that idea, so I want to get it into them. Anybody else on the marijuana? They're all, all of you on marijuana, yes?
Could I just read this? This is a letter that I wrote to you in October...
Speak into the microphone, please.
I'll just speak, I'll stay.
Right, listen.
Okay. I'm writing this letter in regard to how this marijuana publication regulations, marijuana is growing the property directly behind you. The smell, odor from the plants in the morning, noon and night is unbearable. In addition, plants are being sprayed with chemicals from a commercial-grade applicator. The mist from the spray approaches on my property and my outdoor. The mist is strong enough to cause a high nose throat irritation. It is impossible for me to sit on my bed or be outdoors at this time. I contacted the sheriff's department, two deputies responded and surveyed the site. They told me what they couldn't do and left me in state of disbelief. I accessed the county's website and found the county's summary of marijuana publication regulations. I'm even more confused as to what the two deputies were looking at and why they took pictures of the site. The regulations state that plants could not be grown within 75 feet from the property line. The plants are right up to my property line. They must be no closer than 150 feet from off-site residents as measured from the property line. My house is 36 feet from the property line. Finally, the site must not be less than 1,000 feet from Nate Park with playground equipment. Nate Leonard Park has playground equipment and is approximately 400 feet from the site. Marijuana has been grown on this property for the past three years and four years now. The sheriff's department has been aware of it, the hot line has been contacted and the deputies have been contacted. Letters have been written to the sheriff and prior supervisor as well.
Okay. Thank you for sharing.
In addition, I have photos that I just took probably 40 minutes ago.
Alright. Well, that's an interesting case, he did write my...
It's not, it's not interesting.
Okay, it's a not interesting case and it's very important to him and he wrote that to me, so here's what we can do about that, it's not very much. We brought in the code enforcement, asked them whether or not this is a code violation, they said, "Well, go out and look at it, they can't say they'll see the look." And we had the fire emergency, this should have been done a long time ago. Whether code enforcement could have gone out there, I don't know because of their long list of code enforcement needs. And I mean, it is a long list. This is just one letter in a raft of situations all over this county. And I don't know how they're gonna get to everything, all of the problems that we have. Hopefully, the bill where we get some tax dollars in will actually bump up the code enforcement and the sheriff's department so they can have a focused enforcement. If we had some dedicated to that, we'd be much better off. So here's the problem with that, as far as code enforcement's concerned. They get, they get one of these and they get buried. They got 50 others waiting. So they would rather go to ones that they don't get buried, that they can make a quick case and shut them down. And that's what happens is the easier road is the one they travel. The sheriff's department does not want to get buried because they gotta make a case and take it to the DA. And what happened before with Sheriff Rovero was that they just went and started chopping these down and then next thing you know, we had civil liberties lawsuits. And I will tell you that this county cannot stand any more lawsuits. That's a big part of our budget simply because there are so many people that can fight back today.
Well, it seems to me in his case, there are very high numbers of, you know, where they can do and where they can't do it. It's a pretty tricky case.
If you have 1,000 of these clerk-cut cases and you've got one person, they're also on all the trash cases and all of the houses that are unsafe and they've got the fire stuff to review and all the rest of it, that becomes the problem. It's really that they're buried. It's not that they don't care and I will tell you, I talk to them and they're just as sad about this as anybody else, they really want to make this thing work. They've got work, but it's just amazing. And here's something that I didn't know, since I've been on here a year and a half, third, I think I was the third person that's come on to train. They last so long and it's such a tough job, they have to deal with such people that would either be unhappy with them or sad cases that can't do anything about their compliance and there's no support services that they quit. Or they turn out to be unfit for the job for other reasons that they can't go well enough and then they're creating law enforcement, a legal problem for us from the standpoint of the lawsuit and then we have to get rid of them. So I think, just in one area here, I'm on the third one and the other area, I think they're on the second and that's in a year and a half. So it's hard to get people trained up, it's hard to get anybody to take the job in the first place and pay that well, prepared to the grief they have to go through. And then to make this kind of a case is really, the way the laws are written, the way we are not very thorough about it and the code enforcement just has a real problem. So even though it looks like it works and from his standpoint, it's a no-brainer, when you actually put it out there in a pragmatic way, it's a big burden, it's a big problem. So that's not to excuse anybody, I just want you to know why we can't do something about it.
Well, it's like there's these three guys, there are people around my property trying to access this marijuana, they're trying to keep it in place. And one time, my neighbor spotted it and called the sheriff's department. And they're pretty lucky, they're pretty, not easy to go in this way. And so, you know, I'm 73 years old, I can't go out there and go before, confront somebody. I don't know what their impression of my...
No, I fully understand it, it is crazy and that's the whole purpose of the tax, trying to change the fundamentals so that we can get some more money in. It's just as crazy on the other 1,000 cases that I've heard, I mean, they're all over places like this. And that's what happens, we're just a wash with them. Matter of fact, if anything, what's made this kind of a natural area for the marijuana people who've been to has created a scenario, not where we think we can get rid of them because we can't, it's how do you accommodate them so we can do something about just this situation. That's why the tax. So there are places where they can be, they don't cause a problem, throw them there, tax them, get the money and then try to solve them. In the meantime, by the way, I do have code enforcement for you.
I think you need to be careful about the language here because if you're talking about accommodating versus containment, who's gonna take responsibility for containing fumes, containing the impact of these other social relationships around them? So the accommodating versus containment is a really important distinction. So, you know, I think if you, I feel like this is just, it's like, it's more of a question of that, where's gonna be, where's the pushback that actually leads to something constructive in the community versus just another conflict? So how is containment of these behavioral addictive patterns basically, gonna happen?
Well, just everywhere I've said anything, just put the word containment because that's exactly what we're trying to do. Now, you can convince words all day, you just gotta come up with a pragmatic plan and that's exactly what we're trying to do. There are here now and there's a lot, there's one that you think. I've known it, conquered this country, I have seen more than a million plants, more than a million plants. I would tell you how many I think there are and you wouldn't believe, there are a lot of plants. And so we have to find a way, and we call it accommodation from the standpoint that we can't do anything about, the law enforcement, they kick them out, so accommodate them in a way that does contain them. And that's exactly what we're trying to do. So if you are of a different mind, we gotta get that kind of thinking forward. If you really want to go hard-nosed and throw them all out of the county, you're gonna hear a whole lot different argument from everybody that's been doing, that's been trying to deal with this situation. that have been trying to deal with this situation for a long time, we can't get rid of them. They have not... I saw one year, we had three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand plants that were cut down. And yet, they still had a beautiful harvest out of here, and they were... Hugh Halls going east like, you know, on the train. So, it works differently than you think, and the volume is different than you think. So, if they're going to be here, and they're gonna be in a situation where it's a wave of it, and we get a tax, that's different. And nobody's trying to do this to make any money. They're trying to do this to try to make sure that they're contained in a way that is not gonna upset the values of the property and the value of this county for living, quality of life. But, boy, you gotta get on the table and hear all of the steps and make your voice known. And if we have this sort of thing, then that would be the promise. It's to bring all that to be as it happens, before it happens. The first step is the book, yeah.
What's next? We've been allowed to drop opium poppies all over the place because we can't do anything about it, and we need tax money.
Tax money from opium poppies? All right. You know, it's only about marijuana so far, and I don't know... Yeah, and they call it medicine. And it's everybody's medicine. I've just... I've never heard such language.
But it's drugstore.
It's your medicine, too. Just you have to start.
And I get my medicine, I get it through the drugstore.
Okay, let's talk about that, because that was one of the ideas. Yeah, that was one of the ideas. Okay, let's try to wrap them into the drugstore. As long as the feds have it on Schedule I, then, by law, they can't be in the drugstore on it because they... On Schedule I, it says it's not a medicine. So, they can't dispense it at the drugstore. So, we couldn't use that. So, then, they came up with the dispensary idea. And we got one dispensary, I think, over in District Three that's legal. Someone might tell me there's another one, that's the only one I know about. And then, City of Clear Lake voted for them, and they got them down there. For a while, we had them all over. And then, Prop N came in in order to control and throw that business back. Once you loosen up the chain, man, they were in here everywhere. And so, then, they had to be forced back. And so, this is the concept of try to control the whole thing, get some dollars in so we can. That means there's gonna be some growing, and it's gonna be in a way that is gonna be beneficial. So, let me tell you what I think is gonna be the threat. That the commercial grows come in in a big way, with huge greenhouses and big fields. Boutique growing is different. So, if we can keep it to boutique growing, it's no more than what we have right now. And growers themselves are saying that. Keep the big guys off of us, and we'll stay small. So, we're trying to say, "Stay small, and we'll keep the big guys out of it. You keep out of our hair inside these community growth boundaries and away from the backyards and smell the resin." So, you have to be out there where it makes sense. And so, that's the communication that's going on right now. You know, mark me wrong if you will, all I'm doing is sitting on the outside of this committee, and I'm trying to give my input. And that's what we've been doing so far. In fact, they did not have District Three in the original plan. And so, everybody that's growing now would have been an illegal grower, and we wouldn't have been able to do a darn thing about it anymore because there's too many of them. And so, they didn't realize the scope of the problem. So, I started bringing in, you know, information about the scope of the problem, how big it is. And they realized, "We've got to include them as well." And make them legal to tax, and then move them so that they're not a problem. And we'll have all the regulations in place. So, it's trying to do what's been said, but it's not gonna be necessarily what you want. You'd like to see them gone, and I'd like to see them gone. But we're not getting rid of them.
Bottom line is, what's gonna happen? This is gonna be on the state ballot, it's gonna pass. So, it's gonna be... you're gonna be able to have recreation with marijuana. And whether you like it or not, it's gonna be a factor of life. But the bottom line is, why should I have this center? Shouldn't my neighbors have this center? And, you know, it's threatening my neighbor because they thought his son was involved in trying to raid their plants. You know, this is...
Well, you're right, it is crazy. What would happen to Colorado if they had a Washington? I mean, they were rethinking it now, of course, and they would have done it differently. I'm not so sure they would not have done it because they're raking in a lot of dollars in Colorado. But they certainly would have done it differently. What happened in Colorado is that neighborhoods were... What used to have just people living in them and the growers were in localized areas, the neighborhoods were bought out by cartels that had the money to buy every single house. And they stripped them and started growing inside those houses. Now, why would they do that when it's a legalized state? Well, they would do it because they could undercut the market that's taxed. And so, they were just selling right there at the same place where everybody was coming to buy, but they were undercutting the entire market to make them a good profit. And no one saw that one coming. So, Don Anderson, the DA, went out to investigate what's going on in Colorado. And his report was pretty scathing. We gotta be careful what we do. And so, that's also on the table now. And do it in such a way that's controlled. If you can't stop it, do it some way to control it, yeah.
Does that place, it looks very legal on...
Two fifteen. Yes, it is.
Under the Second Amendment.
Under Two Fifteen law, yeah. And they're doing a great job. I stop by and check them all the time, I check the clientele, I see what they're doing, how they're letting them in, and who's selling to who. And that's a good shot.
They're right across the street from...
Yeah, and that's the proper way to do it. And it is for medicine. I mean, they actually do have legitimate medicinal use. Cancer use, there's some forms of autism that is helping. And there's glaucoma issues, there's quite a list. And the difference between the marijuana... I've been doing a lot of investigation on this myself, I had to get up to speed. The difference between the normal medical practice and science and this is that ordinarily, you isolate the disease, and you isolate the cause of the disease, you isolate the medicine that affected. In marijuana, they make a soup. And it's the CMDs and THC's. And a combination of the two to make a soup, and specific for a particular issue. It's completely different than normal medicine. And so, that's why it does not recognize this medicine. And they are starting to get a fairly good following on some of these soup mixes. You can put yourself to sleep, you can calm down people that ordinarily are irritable. There's a lot anecdotal information. Does that make it a science? No. But it makes it a different kind of approach that we have to look at differently to see if it's legitimate.
Do they sell the oils there?
They sell the oils, yes.
Because I... There's been no problem with that across the street. So, because when they first went in, I went across Dr. Lee's running.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I said to her, I said, "Well, I live across the street here, I own these properties." And I said, "I have cars parked out there in front of them. If I have any trouble, I could really come here." And there hasn't been any trouble. She said, "You won't." And there's nobody that goes there and sort of wanna cause any problems. They haven't been any trouble at all.
It's really true. They're very mellow people, they don't wanna cause problems. And they're no different than someone taking a drink at the bar and actually better in a way because they're actually trying to cure someone. And I've had a lot of conversations with them, and I've dropped in from time to time. She's a really great lady, and she is following exactly the original intent of Prop Two Fifteen. And if it had been followed that way in the state, we wouldn't have had any of the problems that we're having with that. And so, I've had to use her as a model. So, we do have some who follow the law in our... We have a couple who follow the law in our district. Any other questions? Okay, so, that's our earth meeting. In an ordinary meeting, we would meet like this, we would have people here. I was gonna... the other one I was gonna do is the emergency preparation. And let me just do this about that. This is the map of the fire, let's finish up with this last subject. If anybody hasn't seen it, it's very, very telling. It shows that the fire burned in behind the avenues, and all of the avenues were under threat. That's why they were asked to evacuate. They didn't realize just how much of a threat they were in. And in fact, the entire town was threatened at one point. And the reason of that threat, let's pass this around. The reason for that threat was the unusual conditions that they cannot model anymore. They're way past the models with the conditions that now occur normally and naturally in the state. They had the big explosion this last year, excuse me, of the Rocky, then the Jerusalem, and then the Valley Fire. We even had the Elk Fire back over here, and a Highland Springs Fire, all in one year. The more recent Clayton Fire are even under conditions that are more severe than the others, except for one condition, and that's the wind. Had we gotten the wind on top of that fire, the entire city of Clear Lake was under threat because the fire had gotten in behind. And those winds from that direction are normal and natural this time of year. It just didn't come up. And the Rocky Fire, they didn't have the winds either, but the difference over there was that they got a big inversion layer over the top that night, and it cooked like it had been open. And so, it was exploding underneath that. And so, it caused this big convection current going and blowing the fire out further and further and further. It turned out to be seventy-five thousand acres. This one could have been all of the acres that were not burned by the Rocky Fire, including the town. So, they were talking about, nobody realizes what this thing's going to do, and it just did something that we didn't expect. It was a hundred and fifty acres, they had an air helicopter with a tank of water hanging underneath it. They had all their engines on top of the fire. They said, "We're gonna get this out in no time." And it got a little bit complacent, and it blew up on them. It blew up. And what that means is, it started to explode in sparks because it was firing out so much. And those sparks were creating fires that were creating sparks and fires like that. It created two heads. One head went around Lower Lake and entered behind the high school, and the other one went around the other side behind the town and took out those buildings. And that's how they lost the hundred and seventy-five structures. So, the whole town had... they just not got it on top of it just right. We could have lost that whole town plus the high school. And if it had been a little bit different from the standpoint of a wind, you would have lost the whole town of Clear Lake. And that's how close it was. And I'll tell you, I was in the meetings with the folks talking about this, they say, "We have no way, no models that model this today." They're changing their models as they talk. The humidity is down, the amount of moisture in wood is so low, we can't measure it. We get unusual winds, they get the heat and the high growth fuels that are here or anywhere in the state, and you have explosive situations. Now, in San Bernardino County right now, they don't know how many homes are burned. It's exploding up these hills. If you were looking at the whole Sierra Nevada, last year, they had seven million trees that were dead. Year before that, it was one million trees, they estimate. This year, twenty-eight million dead trees. So, the whole state is an explosive fireball right now, or tinderball. So, it can happen anywhere. So, what I wanna say in my final emergency prep speech is, please, get your hundred-foot setbacks and get the fuel loading down around your house. Get rid of the grass. I saw buildings that burned that had the setbacks, and they did not have the grass cut, and it burned right up the piles that were right underneath the reeds. And of course, the heat will rise right up, rise right up the side of the house underneath the eave, and then, it'll go in your vents, and then, it gets in your act, in your duct. And that's how they burn down so fast. So, get everything cleared back so the heat will not come up underneath to your house and go up the side. The flame lengths are those lengths of flame that will burn up high, and it'll get to be a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet sometimes. If you have a wind, guess what? It'll go laterally. The heat signature is the big one that you can't necessarily see. It can go out several hundred feet from the fire if it's a hot fire. So, if it goes out several hundred feet, it is far closer to you than your setback. The setback won't do it a hundred feet. It can still go in and set against your house and go up underneath the eaves if the heat is high. Well, they're seeing heats on these fireballs that are high. So, this is a special condition. So, get everything down as much as you can. The neighbors protect neighbors, and that's really what's happening. If your neighbor doesn't do it right, the heat from their fire will create a problem for you. So, everybody ought to help their neighbor get their fuel on.
Sixteen, eighteen years ago, when the upper lights started, it went over the other way.
You know, it was the...
Forks fire.
Forks fire.
We almost had it. And then, we had a windstorm, and then, they got elevated. When they got there, the tops of the trees had a terrible... It just carried right across the Thompsons, and it burned everything down.
Yeah, the canopy fire potential here is tremendous. And you gotta know something about ladder fuels. You know, I'll give you a fire lesson. Get rid of your ladder fuels. If you have a tree, and you have another smaller bush or something next to it, if it gets into the bush from the grass, it'll get up into the tree that's called a ladder fuel. So, get those setbacks so that the grass will burn up underneath the tree, but won't go up into the canopy. Once it gets into the canopy with the wind behind it, then you've got a crown fire, and then, it'll march right across into everybody's background. So, crown fires is what happened up in the Valley Fire situation. It didn't happen that way over here. It was more grass ignited. In other words, it went along the grass line to the next bunch of bushes, up into the trees, and then, went out of ways, then dropped back down. So, had everybody cut back for grass, had everybody trimmed all their bushes, and everybody understood the difference between ladder fuels, and everybody got the setbacks, you would not have seen the problem even though they had the extreme conditions. So, I really urge everyone to understand that. I was gonna bring the guy who followed books tonight. I'm sorry it didn't happen, they're out in emergency situation right now. They still have another copycat potential, and they're investigating some fires. They did catch the guy, as everybody knows, seventy counts cars. And he would set fires all year, and they think maybe he goes back for them. So, without any questions?
Lawnmowers versus weed whackers? Isn't there more pictures of a lawnmower this time of year than a weed whacker?
Lawnmowers, because, and guess what? We're volcanic country, what does volcanic country produce? How they used to start fires in the old days, and flint on steel. And so, you got this steel blade going around and hitting on this stuff, fires all the time. Well, they do have the regular lawnmower with the string blades. You can get one of those, or you can use a weed whacker, use a string, don't use metal. Simply because we got hard rocks everywhere. We are in volcanic county. People don't seem to realize that until they start to fire, they say, "Oh, my word." And the sparks are amazing, you actually can do it. I've painted them and hit steel on them to see if the spark was there. It really is there, and it is a spark that can start a fire. So, anybody else? Be okay? All right?